Oh, good. Well, I supported that, so.
I think you're on.
Next week, Wednesday. Wednesday's great.
Good.
Let me, and what do you have? Let me look at Emily.
Hey, Ryan. Yeah, yeah, I was.
This is for me, taken first name.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. I pulled out the info from it.
Mine is gone.
Yeah, probably.
Are you gone next week, Emily?
Yeah, I looked, I looked in my.
Are you gone next week?
Bag and everything. Remember the time we were going to sign the fraud documents?
Looks like you're.
I had to go to City Hall and sign them again because I don't remember.
Oh, the whole thing was.
It's like when you forget your homework folder and you just lose it.
I told her, I said, Tom probably threw it down.
Oh, my gosh. It's the worst.
Jenny's is missing too, though.
My dog's actually used the. My dog's actually used the bathroom on my homework and I took a picture of him. Like, see, I'm not lying.
Yeah.
Brian, I asked for a copy of that Phase One report from, Mike's not yet quite back from, this is vacation, so.
The flood study, or?
I'll get that in a day or two.
Cool.
Patterson Drive, right?
Oh, okay.
The flood study at Patterson. That's what they were looking at.
Is that, I thought, I do not know this good.
It was, it was more than just Patterson from the presentation.
Okay.
They, they collected, they showed all the data from all the rainwater in the city and all kinds of stuff, yeah.
Because, and the reason I, it caught my eye, we were, we were talking about the city funding a study and they're kind of saying, well, it's, it would duplicate these efforts and so.
Yeah, but they were trying to get DOH and WVU to go in on it.
And they said no?
Yeah, because that's what the flood study recommended was for them to.
Okay.
You know.
We are going to call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, March 28th, and the time is 7:03 in the Mon County Commission Chambers. As a note, Committee of the Whole Meetings of the Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken at these meetings. At this Committee of the Whole Meeting, the following matters are scheduled. We have presentations and items for discussion. I also wanted to note that our mayor and our deputy mayor are in the West Virginia, are at the West Virginia delegation, or, excuse me, are with the West Virginia delegation at the National League of Cities meeting in Washington, DC today, and it's Capitol Hill Day today, so they are not going to be present with us. First on the agenda, we have presentations, and the first item we have is Item A, Parking Authority's Activities Updates with Dana McKenzie, Director of the Parking Authority.
Good evening. Wanted to meet with you all tonight just to give you an idea of where the Parking Authority is and some of the projects that we've got going on right now. Over the last three years, one of the big projects that we have been working on is replacing our lights in our surface lots as well as the, around the outside exterior of the parking garages. We, the current lights that were there were high-pressure sodium lights, and we have switched those to LED lights, and this week, we should finish up that project after three years. We're adding five new lights on the University Avenue Parking Garage along University Avenue, so that should light that up pretty well. We worked with Damian Davis and the Mon Power Company to also have some of the lights in the, in the surface lots that, that are maintained by the power company updated and replaced as well. So, we're seeing a lot, it's a lot brighter than what it used to be. We were able to get these lights along Wall Street between Chestnut and University Avenue, and we've had a couple of property owners actually come and thank us for doing that because it's, it's keeping folks from hanging out in the doorways at nighttime and staying in the particular places. So, I was happy to see that done. We did a total of 108 lights that were updated over the course of the three-year period, and projections, depending on which lights we're looking at, they said we should see, excuse me, cost savings in electricity between 40 to 75 percent. So, that's, that's a pretty substantial saving. So, we're happy to have that done. I wanted to talk to you guys tonight and inform you about the courtesy spaces that we have on High Street and Walnut Street. We actually decided during the pandemic sometime back, we had courtesy spaces in place where we took meter bags and we put them over the meters themselves, and we had signs made that we posted, it's a 10-minute customer parking only. And we got a lot of great feedback from those, folks just stopping in to grab a coffee or drop off shoes or whatever, laundry, whatever the case may be. So, what we decided to do as the authority, as the pandemic came to an end, we took the meter bags off and we pulled the meter heads off as well, and we left the courtesy spaces there. So, they're now permanent courtesy spaces. We have two on Walnut, we have four on High Street where folks can just, again, 10 minutes stop in, pick up, and don't have to worry about paying for parking. So, that's been, we've got a lot of positive feedback from that as well. Most recently, in the last couple of weeks, the Parking Authority, we worked with Public Works with Damian and Megan Deely down on Wolf Street in front of Oliverio's. There was a loading zone that was on the, let's see, it would be the, the east side of the street, and when initial businesses moved in there, it was needed on that side. So, we worked with them and we got it put on the opposite side now, so there's loading zone in front of the Oliverio's as well as Mountain State Brewery. And what we've done there is we put a time limit on the loading zone similar to what we have in the downtown, so it's 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And we did do a survey with the businesses to see, you know, what time was adequate for them, and they said 11:00 would be perfect. And after 11:00 AM, those spaces become courtesy spaces as well for customers. In meeting with Chad Bartlett from Mountain State Brewery, he said a lot of folks will order, you know, their pizzas and just swing by, pick them up, and then they're on their way. And that particular area was all yellow at the time, and the loading zone was across the street, so we have got that taken care of, and hopefully that, that helps out down in that area as well. Trying not to talk too fast. So, we also recently, in the last six months, had the Parking Authority website updated. We've not had training on it yet as far as how to, to go in and, and update it ourselves. We're hoping to have that done here in the next couple of weeks. We have, we had it scheduled for this week, and one of our main employees that would be updating it ended up out of the office with COVID, of course. And so, we had to postpone that. So, but we will get on that, and what's nice is we work with the city and we get our website linked in with the city's website, so folks can see the codes and everything, and it's, it's a really good site. We're looking to upgrade our camera systems in the parking garages. We've had the current systems for several years now. They're DVR systems, and we have three separate DVRs that we try to operate, and you have to figure out each one individually, and it drives me up a wall. But we just had one Monday, or excuse me, it was over the weekend, one of the DVRs went out. So, it's a good thing we're looking to update, and what we're looking at, going with is the same camera system that the city has with the Ricotta cameras and get those updated and a few more added down in the Wolf Garage. Right now, currently, there's only four cameras in the Wolf Garage, and our hopes is to upgrade it, so there are 42 cameras in that garage. And I can tell you through the years, these camera system have helped tremendously with the police department, with, with damage to our parking equipment where folks either kick, punch, paint, whatever it will be with the pay stations where they rip the gates off or drive through the gates. They, they've really come in handy as far as us trying to track folks down and, and working with the police department to get things resolved. So, we're looking forward to, to this as well. Now, this isn't set in stone yet as far as the cameras themselves. We're going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision because our equipment is starting to fail, but it's something we're going to be discussing at our next Parking Authority Board meeting, but just wanted you all to be aware of that as well, so we can, we can work together with the city so they can have access to these cameras. Within the next month, we are going to have an assessment done of the Spruce Street Parking Garage, the structure itself. The garage was built in the late 80s, early 90s. It's been very well maintained, but we're starting to see a few places where we've got some cracks in beams. Don't think there's anything structurally imperative right now that, that would keep folks from parking in there, but we want to get ahead of the curve and make sure that it's taken care of before we do start seeing issues. It, and I can tell you off the top of my head that it's not going to be near as in-depth as what the, the University Avenue Parking Garage was. That garage was built in 1977, and we were about 1.7 million, I think, in repairs is what we did in that garage last year. And with the repairs, the contractors and the engineers said we should see another 20 years out of that parking garage, so I was really happy to hear that news. And the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight and continue to, to lean on you all a little bit is we're still looking for a maintenance shop, or a place for a maintenance shop. It kind of fell through with the car wash. As we, I think I talked to you all about this before, when we were doing our due diligence prior to whenever they come in and did the core drilling, they found some old petroleum materials within the soils, and so there's going to have to be some remediation done there. When I talked to the owners, they assured me they were going to come in and get it done, we could meet again, and we've not seen that happen yet. I would still like to see it happen, but for the future, I don't know exactly when that would be. We did meet, or I did meet with the Land Reuse Agency. We talked about the possibility of a, of a shop on the, in the parking lot beside 430 Spruce Street, and they weren't really keen on the idea. They were looking more along the lines of a, a park or something that may complement the farmer's market. So, we're still looking and searching. I did email Emily and let her know that should the South High Fire Station become available in the future, you know, that may be something we would be interested in, you know, getting our name thrown in the hat as well and, you know, and see if that might be a possibility. Other than that, that's kind of a mouthful, but that's about where we're at with the Parking Authority. Do you all have any questions for us?
With the courtesy parking downtown, is it 15 minutes?
It's 10 minutes.
10 minutes? And have we had many issues with people using it for free long-term parking?
Not many. We, we've had a few, but once they get a citation or two, they, they usually stop. And, and the ones that do abuse it are generally the same ones that abuse it over and over, so it's not like it's new customers. We try to educate folks, you know, if we don't know them, give them a warning, let them know, but if we continue to see abuse, then they are going to get a citation for it.
And then a separate question with regards to the new lighting, how much more light does that distribute compared to the old lighting? Like, how much more lumens or, you know, is footage?
Yep. We've got the chart here. They are comparable. What we did, the majority of, and let's see, 20, there was 24 of them. They were 250 watts or, let's see, the luminas were 8,000, but they actually, the luminas comparable were 6,525, so they're a little less luminas than what they were before, but we added more lighting to, to cover it. And the beauty of it is, is they actually, the life expectancy of those lights are tremendously longer. They said we could, or the life expectancy of those are around five years or so per bulb, and most of these bulbs, not most, but quite a few of them will run 24 hours a day. A lot of them we do have in the lots that have the dies on them, so they will shut off when the sunlight comes up, but the ones around the parking garages that were in the garages will, will run all the time. So, we, for the most part, again, another example, the 400-watt bulbs that we replaced, they had 44,000 luminas, and we replaced them with 43,000 luminas, so you're not losing a whole lot.
But you added more lights to.
Correct, that's right.
Over.
Yeah, we just, like I said, we, like tomorrow, we're going to put five more new ones up on University Avenue that were never there before.
Nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just, if I could, you might want to share with council, they, they passed a, an update to, to the ordinance that dealt with people who circumvented the electric arms. You might, you might share with them since they haven't heard the.
Sure.
Real-life purpose and reason for that.
So, we had an ordinance which we had to create initially with folks either driving through the, the gates or lifting the gates to exit without paying for parking, and, and it was covered in the ordinance. And when you think you've got everything covered, they become creative and you have to rethink. So, what we found was there was a vehicle that came out of the Spruce Street Garage going onto Spruce Street. Instead of pulling up to the gate, they drove through the yard and up through the bushes and then out and then hit Spruce Street. We had one morning, we had a small vehicle, which I'm still amazed that they were able to do it, but down in the Wolf Parking Garage, there is a exit for pedestrians that goes out onto the trail. They were actually able to fit their car through there, went out and drove out the trail and then came down the road. So, it's always a challenge. Motorcycles, we, we see it all the time. They'll just hit the sidewalk and go up and go through the gate, and they're gone. So, that was the, the reason for the update to that ordinance. It's a challenge, but.
Madam Chair, ma'am, I just want to say thank you. I've heard very, very positive things from numbers of businesses about the cooperation. It's, it's nice to finally hear that they're grateful for our parking as opposed to giving us static about the fact that we have to charge for our parking. And you've been doing an excellent job. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And, and we've, we've been trying our best and we're going to continue to move forward, you know, more with, with meeting with downtown merchants and, and property owners and doing what we can do to, to meet the needs they do have. There's a lot of projects that, that do need tackled, but we can only do one at a time, so we are moving forward.
Since the last time we met and we had this yearly report, I actually got a boot on my car.
I don't know.
But I wanted to say that I appreciate how quickly everybody moves. I called them, 15 minutes later, the boot was gone, and I was happy to give back to the city of Morgantown with my feet.
Don't really know how to comment to that.
It's all right. It's my fault. It's my fault.
You know, the, the last thing I would add, if, if I could, the, the employees of the Parking Authority, of all the organizations in, in, in the city, there's a lot of abuse that takes place there. And those folks deserve a lot of gratitude from, from the city in terms of just being willing to, to deal with knuckleheads. I don't know how, how to put it, but being willing to, to, to deal with them and put up with, with a lot of stuff that, we really appreciate them.
Thank you, and I will pass that along.
Yeah.
Again, ma'am, don't mean to stir the pot, but I'm curious to know, are there any plans for, or any considerations for neighborhood parking? Anything in the works? Any ideas?
Currently, no. Right now, as far as the neighborhoods go, as far as I know, we've not had complaints, which is a good thing.
Yes.
And the program that's in place now seems to work really well. When we switched it several years back to give folks options or different options, it, it really seemed to make most folks happy. So, our, our biggest battle that we have in, within the neighborhoods is the lack of off-street parking, especially in, when you get into the Greenmont area and, and that side of, of South Park. But beyond that, there's really nothing that we really have set in stone right now as far as making changes. Anything we hear from the neighborhood associations, we're more than happy to look into and try to help out the best that we can with those.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I appreciate your ease of paying parking tickets online.
We continually contribute.
So, it's not just me.
To the Parking Authority.
Well, I can say I paid my share of those through my children, so I can say I've given back as well.
Makes it a very convenient option to be able to pay that online.
Yes, and it's amazing what folks with, with technology, like our Park Mobile app, for example. I was kind of, when we initially rolled this out, I thought, well, people use it, well, they know. they not use it. Not, so we gave it a shot. I mean, we weren't out anything. And over the last couple of months, we've had a minimal of thirty thousand transactions through Park Mobile. And that's each month. And that's quite, which really helps us and the authority because it, it cuts down on our collections, you know, and the coins and the time that the guys have to spend out there where we used to collect twice a week. Now we're doing it like every other week. And so it, it really helped a lot. So I was happy to see that and folks really take advantage of that. And the thing that really boggles my mind, and I guess it's because we give the customer the option, is when you use Park Mobile, you pay the normal rate and your transaction is an additional thirty-five cents. I've never heard one person complain about that thirty-five cents. Now, if we raise it a nickel on the street, we're going to get tarred and feathered, but I guess it's because they have the choice, which is a good thing.
Or they don't see it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, true.
One other thing, you said you mentioned the kiosks are, I understand that there's some designs that are being, some redesigns of the pay stations?
We, we met, I think it was two weeks ago, yeah, Damian and I met with the, with Ron and the WVU School of Design and with the architects, or excuse me, yeah, the School of Architecture. And then there's a presentation tomorrow to see what the students come up with. They're actually designing it for a class, but it's hopefully something we're going to be able to incorporate or portions of. So I'm really anxious to see what they come up with.
Is the Mills Group involved in that also?
They were initially, but I have not heard anything from them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dana.
Yes, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have item B, Mountaineer CBB two thousand and two annual report.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Are you doing good this evening? Thanks for having me. I'm Joe Vasakia, Operations Manager for Visit Mountaineer Country CBB. I just, I came here tonight to present our annual report. It's in the packet that I passed out to everybody. It's, it's right at the front. Twenty twenty-two was a pretty decent year for us. There's a lot of rebuilding of staff and processes and procedures because of, because of the pandemic. And pretty much it was Susan Riddle that was manning the CBB almost by herself for almost a whole year. So we added five new full-time staff members. So we're up to seven staff members and things are moving along rather nicely. You know, we, we kicked off our twenty twenty-two marketing campaign, our Come Go Wild campaign, and we've really seen great results from that, especially from the Philly and DC area. A lot of our data from our website is showing that. Our new rack cards and our new guide is in that packet that I gave you as well. Some other things that the CBB was involved in in twenty twenty-two is the Goodwill City Ambassador Program. At the WVU football games, we, we manned the courtesy shuttles to get people to and from the parking lot that need assistance. We have four shuttles that we manned for, for each of the games. Also, we take care of the Morgantown Event Advancement Fund and the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund. Both programs are, are doing very well. We just had another, another one approved for the Morgantown Fund just today. I think I sent that to you today, Emily. Also, you know, we're helping out a few nonprofits in town, the Arts Council of Greater Morgantown and the Mountaineer Trail Network Regional, Regional, or excuse me, Recreational Authority by giving them some office space over there to help them get their programs off the ground. I mean, as you all know, nonprofits have, are, are struggling, so we're, we're definitely helping them out. What else for twenty twenty-two? I think one of the biggest things that we were involved in in twenty twenty-two for Morgantown, Mon County and West Virginia as a whole is we were invited to bid on the twenty twenty-four Olympic diving trials. There's a QR code in there. You can see the full packet if, if you want to take a look at it later. But, you know, it was a testament of Mon County and West Virginia and the city of Morgantown working together, you know? We had the governor's office, WVU, ourselves, Mylan Park. Everybody worked together to put this bid together. So it was a really good thing to bring everybody together and get everybody to work, work together for a common goal. Unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't win the bid, but what we did win and what West Virginia won and what Morgantown and Mon County won was national recognition for, within the diving community for being a diving destination. And one thing that Susan and I have been working with, with USA Diving is they've committed to us over the next four years is we're going to have at, at minimum one national event out at Mylan Park for diving. One event for the next four years leading up to the twenty twenty-eight Olympics. So hopefully at that point in time, we'll be in a better spot and, you know, we'll have more of a history in, in diving. We did a lot of continuing education in twenty twenty-two. Tourism Day at the Legislature, Hospitality U, the West Virginia Legislative Interrooms were held here in Morgantown. You know, we, we helped out with that a lot. We attended the governor's conference. Myself and Susan went to some state auditors trainings. That kind of leads us into compliance, you know? We're required with the CBB Oversight Bill that passed in twenty-one to submit our financial statements, annual reports to the West Virginia State Auditor and the Joint Commission on Government and Finance. We've submitted our twenty twenty-two report. Our audit with Gray River and Maze went, went great, no problems. Bill, you heard a little bit about that this morning. CBB's in good shape, you know? We're, we're setting ourselves, ourselves up as long as, as well as Mon County and the city of Morgantown up for the future to, to bring people in here. So compliance-wise, we're good. We've taken care of everything we need to take care of. I think that's a, that's our annual report overview. Any, any questions on it?
I have a question, a statement.
Sure.
My kids on the Morgantown high swim team saw the hard work you all put in out there over at Mylan with that. And then I also wanted to compliment the fact that I did, I was teaching a tourism West Virginia class to my high school students. And a lot of times I'd go back to a lot of the information and stuff that you put out there because it was so user-friendly, especially for the kids that were trying to learn about all the great things to do in their state. I just wanted to commend you for it.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I mean, if you, you need some information for your class, don't hesitate. Please reach out. We'll be more than happy to provide.
I will.
Good, good.
I, I've seen the figures on this, but if you would share them, how are we now, how's our occupancy rate and our visitors' rate based on this year as opposed to pre-COVID?
We're about there. Occupancy rates running steady, about sixty-five percent, sixty-two to sixty-five percent. You know, two thousand and nineteen numbers were about sixty-seven percent. So we're, we're pretty much there. Average daily rate's about one fifteen per night. And, you know, we were at one nineteen in twenty, or twenty nineteen. So, I mean, we're pretty much right there. And all the trends are showing that twenty twenty-three should be a, be a really strong year, you know? Talking with all of the different properties, they all feel the same. So they feel like they're pretty much back.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on annual report? One other announcement I just wanted to tell you about this, the Visit Mountaineer Country CBB, we're going to host a Tourism Summit in June. We're going to send a save the date out, but the dates are June fifth and sixth. We're going to hold it at Reynolds Hall downtown in the, in the new building. And out at, the second day will be out at the Mon County Ballpark to celebrate the Black Bears and their opening day. The, the agenda and stuff will be, will be published here soon, but please save those dates. You all will receive an invitation. Also, we're looking for medal presenters for the Spring National Championships in May, just like we did in December for diving. We, we were awarded the Spring Championships as well. So they'll be, they'll be back in May. So if any of you are interested, please, please reach out to Susan or myself. And I know Mayor Celine did that last year and she had a really good time doing it. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty great experience to go out there and, and watch and see some of that stuff right in our backyard. So if, if any of you are interested, please let me know, okay? Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned how we are kind of becoming a diving destination. And I guess I just wouldn't have initially thought of West Virginia or us as a diving destination, but what are other?
You and many other people, believe me.
Yeah. So like, what are other things that you've seen drive people here that is similar to that that I just wouldn't have necessarily thought of?
I, I feel like that's, that's the most unique right now. I mean, our, our outdoor assets drive people. I mean, that's, that's what we've seen a lot from Philly and DC area is people coming and staying for two or three days and really coming to Morgantown and staying in Morgantown, but going out to Taylor County and Preston County and checking out all the outdoor activities that we have. So, I mean, outside of diving, I don't, I mean, that's, it's, it is, it's very unique. And I know USA Diving, the, the committee themselves were very hesitant on coming here the first time. I guess it was last, not last year, but in, in twenty, they, they had an event here. And they were very hesitant, but they were really won over by, by the hospitality and the people that are here. Everybody was just so welcoming. You know, the, the gentleman from USA Diving that, that heads the committee was, was here in December and he was just blown away, you know? He, he walked into, I think, you know, he flew into the airport and he had a USA Diving shirt on. And they said, oh, you're here for the diving things. Welcome. And they, he started talking to him and just engaging him. He said at the hotel, they were the same way and every place that he, he ate at, everybody was really engaged and excited. So, I mean, it's just a testament to, to our community. So it's good stuff going on.
I have a question now. So with, you know, USA Diving, is, is there interest maybe, I don't know, from USA Swimming?
You know, we, we haven't had many talks with them, but I know we have been getting a lot of swimming interest. Just this past weekend, we worked with the PA YMCA to bring the PA State YMCA Tournament, or excuse me, Swim Meet to Mylan Park, which was last weekend. They had twelve hundred and fifty swimmers, almost thirty-five hundred people accompanying those swimmers. So, I mean, it was, it was a pretty amazing sight out there. So it's definitely something that we're, we're talking about going after.
Great.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you for the report and update.
Yeah, thank you, guys. You have a wonderful evening, okay?
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Next on the agenda, we have item C, Mountain Lion Transit Update. Do we have anybody for Mountain Lion Transit Update?
I spoke with the clerks this morning. Their, their understanding is that there would be a representative here, so I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay. I have, was not confirmed, so I just double-checked. All right. We'll move on. Next on the agenda, we have the public portion. If anyone from the public is wishing to speak?
You're welcome to hit the gavel.
If you wanted to come speak?
That was just for Jeff. You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Marley Unigaz. I'm running for Morgantown City Council and I'm here also in an unofficial capacity from Mountain Lion Transit Authority as a member of the Board of Directors. Just a quick note, this is not the official report and I assume that will be coming at a, at a very soon meeting. But I'm very proud of the work that we've been doing with Mountain Lion this year with our buses, the levy-funded bus system as well, levy-funded in part. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the recent updates. We've been able to focus on not only accessibility, but convenience, frequency of routes. Looking at a, a couple of them in particular in Saberton and Grafton Heights routes, there were a couple of lines that had been going only twice a day because they were not a particularly full bus line. And now we have them available on call thirteen hours a day, anytime that you need them so you can get plugged into the system. I've had people tell me that they've been able to get a job because of this. They've been able to, you know, really connect into the community. And that's just so vital with our public transit system. And if you, if you do live in one of those areas, you work in one of those areas, you're looking to reach one of those lines. It's available through the Uber app. They are mountain lion drivers, they're, they're fully trained, they're driving smaller shuttles that are branded with the Mountain Lion logo. And you can use your bus pass or, you know, pay the regular fee of seventy-five cents standard. There are some discounted rates available as well. With that in mind, I just wanted to say, you know, how wonderful it is to have this public transit system as part of our community transportation system. When it comes to roads, walkability, our wonderful rail trails, this is just really great to have this as a piece of the puzzle. When we look at housing costs, it is really housing plus the cost of transportation. Because if you live somewhere in the community, but you don't have access to a personal vehicle, you know, we need to make sure that it's, you know, you're able to use the bus, you're able to use the rail trails, or if you are driving, that our roads are safe. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of the wonderful people that I, that I work with through Transit, the Transit Authority. And encourage everyone to check out the Levy Tax Pass. It is available not only to folks who are homeowners, but it's also available to people who are employed in the area, who rent in the area as well as a resident. We have some really great programs on busride.org. And yeah, thank you so much for supporting transportation in our community.
Thank you. We have a thin crowd, but anybody else wishing to speak? Okay. Next on our agenda, we have items for discussion. We're going to start with item A, an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the second ward of the city of Morgantown from pro, professional, residential and office district to B two service business district, amending article one three three one of the planning and zoning code of the city of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit here to attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein.
I just want to note, I think that in the agenda, it is a type of second ward, it's seventh.
Seventh ward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And?
City Manager, City Attorney?
Yeah, Ricky.
If it please, yes, if it please, counsel, I'd like to have Ricky, our Director of Planning, come up and present this one.
Yes, please.
Thank you, City Manager Haas. Good evening, counsel. In addition to the revised zoning ordinances that corrected, to Counselor Butcher's point, the second ward of the seventh ward, you should have both on your desk there. Also included, the PowerPoint presentation that's given to counsel at Planning Commission. And we thought we'd kind of step through that as opposed to going through your seventy-five page pack with a lot of text and other things in there. So if you bear with me, I want to use this and we can walk through this to kind of talk about what the, the map amendment is. So if you look, turn to page two at the top of the slide deck, slide three, these were pictures of the properties in question. Parcel ninety-three on the left is home to Advantage Health and Wellness and parcel ninety-two is the vacant lot. ninety-two is the vacant lot across the street. And these pictures were taken from the sidewalk on Van Boris looking west towards Boroughs Street. If you look down at the bottom slide, slide four, you can see where these parcels ninety-two and ninety-three are in relation to the city's zoning district. And you can see that they're abutting existing B2 and B1 commercially zoned districts. The area in the upper right-hand corner is actually in Mon County and in the West Run Planning District. If you flip to slide three, slide three gives the purpose, and I won't read them for the purpose of this meeting, but if you have any questions, let me know. But the purpose of each one of those districts, both the pro and the service business, service business district. And slide six shows if the zoning map amendment was passed, what that would look like graphically in terms of where the pro is located now, and the B2 in relation to the surrounding R1A and R1 districts. If you turn to page four, slide eight, when looking at land use changes, the, the staff is encouraged and officials are encouraged to look at the city's comprehensive plan, and more particularly, the land management plan. So the next series of slides are going to show from the comprehensive plan what was envisioned back in twenty thirteen when the plan was adopted for this area. Slide eight shows the conceptual growth map. And because as you all know, Morgantown is mostly built out, there's not many greenfields or areas developed in the community that are, already have some sort of infrastructure or development already in place. Infield development is encouraged, in particularly along commercial corridors or along major traffic areas, to, to give more development opportunities inside the city limits aside from annexation. If you slide, if you turn to page five, the top slide, slide nine, shows in twenty thirteen what was considered to be the pattern and character area map. And again, all of these maps, especially this one, is mentioned several times throughout the plan as being a characterization and not necessarily parcel-by-parcel delineation of how the property was perceived or conceived to be when it came to developing the plan. So in that red box in the middle of the map there, contains parcels ninety-two and ninety-three. You can see that Neighborhood Two is one of the designations in that box, and the other one is the commercial corridor. And you can see the definitions there on slide number ten. Looking at slide number, or going to page number six, slide number eleven, this is the future land use map. And again, looking at that red box, that target area, including parcels ninety-two and ninety-three, are identified as commercial corridor enhancement areas. And corridor enhancement areas are defined as improving development along corridors with a mix of uses, increase in density at major nodes of intersections, and roadway improvements to improve traffic flow, pedestrian, and biking experiences. The table on bottom of page six, and we turn to page seven, shows the appropriate development types that were perceived to be appropriate for each kind of character area. And if you notice, for the corridor enhancement, it's multifamily residential, civic and institutional, neighborhood center mixed use, community commercial, office research, and green space. Turning to page eight, slide fifteen, after looking at the comprehensive plan, which does a really good job of laying out how staff and the public should look at these matters, the proposed zoning amendment, map amendments for parcels ninety-two, ninety-three appear to be consistent with the regional vision, conceptual growth framework, and land management plan described in the twenty thirteen comp plan update. More specifically, the proposed zone change and prohibited conditional uses associated therewith are keeping with the regional vision to capture further growth in the city's corporation limits. The intersection of Van Boris and Chestnut Ridge Road and Boroughs Street represents a major node in the community. As such, a mix of uses and increase in density was envisioned and encouraged in the corridor enhancement area. And finally, there are natural and regulatory zoning controls in place to buffer commercial development or uses from existing single-family neighborhoods. These include Boroughs Run, as well as the parking and landscape buffering requirements in the city's comprehensive plan. So if those parcels are rezoned and developed, they would have to meet the new parking, landscaping, setback, all the standards that go along with the commercial development that abuts a residential neighborhood. And then considering all that, Planning Commission moved to food, moved to approve, or for a recommendation to counsel to approve both zoning map amendments, and the vote was four to zero. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Was it four zero, or did I see four two?
Four two zero.
Four two zero.
No abstentions.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that, that's a clarification.
Well, I thought I read it the other way, so I-
Okay.
Madam Chair, a question?
Yes.
The, with the change to B2, the main, what I see as the main difference is the height of the building can go from thirty-five feet to seventy-two feet.
Correct, that's, that's one of the design standards, right.
And so that was just a comment, but my, my second question is that the DOH is going to have on Van Boris, a major redesign of that roadway. And I know some of the property owners were concerned with the use of their properties as it's currently zoned, and wondered with, if it were to change to B2, how the change of what might go there would be incorporated into the DOH plan on the reconfiguration of that roadway?
That I can't speak to, how DOH would take a look at that. I know our office received some phone calls about past potential of looking at a PUD in that general area, and giving the PUD requirements of having at least two acres with DOH acquisition that would potentially restrict that type of development project from going in, in that general vicinity. But I can't speak to if the zoning and map amendments were changed, what that would do to DOH's plans. I don't know if, if City Attorney Simonton could address anything more, but that wasn't taken into consideration, and then in the comprehensive plan, it kind of takes, looks at what, what's the highest and best use of that property irrespective of what the applicant actually wants to do, which on their application, they're looking to be able to get more retail and restaurant uses at these two properties. At least that's what the, on the application made clear to us. And, yeah.
Counselor Quackey, do you have any insight on that from the NPO?
The zoning change is not going to alter the difficulties with access to that property. I think what the zoning change may do is change the attitude of the owners that are currently in possession of the property in terms of what they might be able to do with it. But I don't think that's a consideration as far as the zoning is concerned, as to what the property owner's intentions are. So I don't know that we can comment on that, but I'm confident that this has been vetted correctly, and I have faith in what the Planning Commission recommends, so I'm comfortable with what's being presented.
Do you know if they had any additional, did they, if they had any concerns, whether it be traffic flow or anything like that when they were deciding this, or?
In terms of the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Or any comments from the public?
I guess both, most of from the Commission.
So at the Planning Commission level, there was some discussion about the DOH improvements and how to take that into consideration, general traffic flow issues. The only comment that we received was from Mr. Pirelli, who's a small business owner and property owner, and he provided through written comment, it's in your packet, just his concerns. He has property off of Kalani, and he did express some reservations about, as Mr. Harshberger pointed out, the increase in heights that would be permitted, potentially permitted. But that was the only comment that staff received during the whole process to date.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have item B, an ordinance-
Madam Chair, would you entertain a, a motion to move this to the agenda or request counsel's dissent?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
To the agenda?
Would support that, yes.
Next on the agenda, item B, an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Pop Shop WV Inc. for space within the Woodburn School Building.
Well, if you-
That would be me, that's why. So in front of you is updating a lease or-
I guess entering into a new lease with Pop Shop. So they're currently a tenant within our Woodburn complex, and they have been occupying the top floor due to kind of trying to simplify some of the lease language and help them with some of their personal needs, they didn't quite need as much space, and to allow us to do renovations, this would actually move them down to the main floor, the floor, and gets kind of weird because all the, the floors are offset. So this would occupy three classrooms on the main floor and leave the top floor vacant so we can do some of those proposed renovations. There was a question asked if we would be able to, if they were intending to go back upstairs or not. I think that's something that we'd like to work through with the Woodburn Commission once we're done with those renovations, and just kind of reevaluating the space layout. But this would allow us to basically go through that process. I think it's currently set up for a year-long lease and basically re, kind of, they can continue to roll over, we could make changes to the leases at those times.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, the four dollars and thirty-five cents per square foot, is that typical for that?
Yeah, that's, that's- Is one of the efforts that we've been taking to get all of our tenants on similar rates as far as square footage, and also making, some of the leases were all-inclusive and other ones had, were supposed to have been paying a portion of the utilities, and so this makes all of those leases all-inclusive, or at least in the main school building. But as far as the price per square foot, that's, that's similar to what the other folks in the building are paying.
I'm curious, how did we arrive at that amount?
Looking at some of the past practices and what has been done, taking into consideration the space, the nonprofit, the status of the organization, there's a lot of things, I guess, that work to come to that amount. When we first looked at it, every single tenant had a different rate, and then certain rates were supposed to change, and, or, and other ones were flat, and so we were trying to work to simplify those, to move some of those forward.
I don't mean to be Scrooge, but on the other hand, I do like the idea of having that space available for nonprofits, that I'd like to have the ability to maintain that space too. And I was just wondering whether that's competitive in terms of what they might experience. It seems to me to be a very reasonable price.
Yes, I think if we went much higher, we would not be able to work with many of the nonprofits that we have been able to work with thus far. As far as being able to maintain, our tenants actually pay now, which is really helpful. So that's something we've been able to correct over the last few years, getting people to actually pay rent, so.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Move to-
The agenda?
Place on the agenda.
Yep, good with that.
Next on the agenda, we have item C, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a deed of release from the Federal Aviation Administration and convoyance of a quitclaim deed to West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways for Real Estate along West Run Road. City Attorney?
Mr. Simonton might be able to shed some light on that one.
Thank you. Ken, counsel, this, this ordinance will authorize the transfer of property to the Division of Highways for purposes of road construction on West Run Road. The property involved is a part of the airport property and contains or provides access to the approach towers that guide planes into the airport. DOH will be taking two permanent non-controlled access easements, those will be the roadway, as well as a temporary construction easement over these parcels. The, the transfer of that land, because it's part of the airport operations area, has to be approved by the Federal Aviation Administration. They have received the DOH estimate of the fair value of those properties, which is fifteen thousand one hundred dollars, and have approved that. That approval comes in the form of the deed of release that you are authorizing. The deed of release is something, if approved by counsel, that we will record and that places restrictions on the property to make sure it is suitable for continued use of the airport, so that the subsequent owners here, DOH, will agree that airplanes can still fly in and out, and they can make noise while doing it, essentially. And then the, the quitclaim deed will actually operate as the transfer of the, the property to DOH. DOH's right-of-way agent has reviewed and approved that form as well, and so we are recommending that counsel move this ordinance to an agenda and approve the transaction.
Perfect. Any questions?
None.
Questions on this side? No? Move to an agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, or should we entertain a motion?
Move to adjourn?
What time is it?
Seven fifty-eight.
If I hadn't made you three minutes late, starting.
That's true. Second, second.
We need to tell the mayor, when she's not around, we manage to get out here.
All right, thank you.